At this time, I will call the meeting in the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. There's been one change to the agenda as it was originally published, and then it was removed from the agenda, and that was a public hearing on the sign ordinance. So that public hearing is not taking place this evening. It will be considered at a future meeting. Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then for action will be considered approval of the minutes from the regular meeting as well as the council work session. Both were held on January 10th. The council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections?
Move to approve.
Seconded by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll now move into public hearings, and we have two public hearings that are scheduled this evening. Second public hearing is going to be on the North Third Street Reconstruction Project. The first public hearing, which is Agenda Number Two, is the public hearing of the new Article Eight, the Residential Rental Code. We will conduct this public hearing. And I'll, we'll call in a second Jason Anderson to introduce the public hearing and conduct the public hearing. I would imagine, not imagine, I would guess that the majority of the audiences here this evening is for this public hearing. Once Jason is done with his kind of informational presentation and opening the public hearing, then we'll open it up for public comment. That is the purpose of a public hearing. And we'll allow, you know, anyone who wishes to speak, but because we are on, carried live on, on public access television, I do need anyone who's going to be speaking and testifying to come up and use the microphone at the podium. And when you do that, I'd also ask that you would, there's a roster there that you, you sign your name there, and when you start speaking, say your name, just in case the clerk wouldn't, you know, has trouble differentiating someone's handwriting from what their name is. So, so that's the procedural things. We will go through public input as far as anyone and everyone who wants to speak. On the other hand, we don't want to, you know, pile on with the same information over and over and over, you know. So, so we'll run this public hearing the way it should be run, to gather input, allow everybody to provide their input, and then we'll either close the public hearing or the council at that point may choose to continue the public hearing, and that would be the council's choice. So that should cover some kind of how our procedures kind of work with this public hearing. So now I'll introduce Jason Anderson. Jason is the Public Works Director and City Engineer for the City of Marshall. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Can you hear me okay? Is this coming through? I'll address you at the podium tonight because our speakers are not working well over at our normal locations. So, well, as we're all aware, city staff has been working in coordination with council and landowners, landlords, on creation of a rental ordinance for the City of Marshall. We received the direction dating all the way back into fall of 2021 to start looking into this and reviewing other communities and reviewing our own community and our needs for, for our community. We started down the path of a rental ordinance that had regular inspections every two, two to three years where we were looking at fees on a regular basis to cover that program and really looking at inspecting for housing code items. We already have an adopted housing code in the community, and it's a formal, it was a formal program to implement inspections to, to review for housing code compliance. After numerous meetings throughout the year of 2022 with council committees, the city council as a whole, and landowners and property owners to seek some input, we have since amended that program. And what we're bringing forward tonight is a rental program that does not have regular inspections, but we do feel still covers a lot of the important topics that we need to cover with a rental program. You know, one of the biggest concerns we have as a city staff with rentals in the community is we don't know where they're at. We don't know who the owners are, who the contacts are, and a big part of this program that we're now shifted to is it's a registration program. The main focus of this rental registration program is to, for the city to understand where all of our rentals are, have all of the information we need to contact property owners and property managers as the need arises, and also to make tenants aware that this program exists and that there are contacts for them. So each unit through this program would be required to have a posting for the tenants as well, and, and the unit must be posted to have contact information as well as contact information to the city, so the tenants understand their rights as well. So, you know, there was a lot of effort put into this ordinance. I don't, it's, it's, I think, we think that it puts the city in a, in a good spot as we start to walk down the path of a rental program. We think that we, we tried to meet the property owners halfway and try to reduce their burden in managing our in and out and our inspections of their, their properties all the time while also providing outlet for the tenants in the event that they need to get through to someone other than their landlord, to reach the city for a review. So we tried to meet, meet the intent of what we think the program needs to do for the City of Marshall. So I'll reiterate that the program that we're bringing forward tonight has no regular inspections, but it does have a registration requirement and a posting requirement. And if we do get complaints or concerns brought to us by tenants, at that point in time, the city would inspect the unit for complete compliance with the housing code and work with the property owner to make sure that any required changes get done. So that's kind of the basis of what we're presenting tonight, and I don't think I'll talk about too many more details than that, but we're certainly here for that conversation if the need arises. Myself or Ilya Gutman can help answer questions. Unless there's any questions from the council from me at this point in time, I'll turn it over for public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Ilya, did you have anything you wanted to add at this time?
No.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we will open it up then for public input as part of this public hearing. Greg, if you'd come up and use, I'm going to ask you to use the microphone.
For the people that aren't in here, Greg, for the people on, on the television.
At the last meeting, we left thinking that this was a dead issue, and we asked to have a list of the problems that you've had that your city attorney and the existing ordinances couldn't take care of. We never got a list. Now, the list has been requested by Kevin Strupp, and he was told by somebody, I don't know who, the new city attorney or someone else, that they weren't going to provide one. So we don't know of any problems that you've had that you haven't been able to handle. And then no one received notices for this meeting except some little dinky thing in the, in the legal page of the newspaper, that you were going to have another meeting and try to get this thing through. But you notified everybody by letter last time, but not this time. So it sounds like subterfuge or incompetency to me. I'd like to know some answers, why we didn't hear, what problems you've had in the past that you couldn't address without all this new bureaucracy and this expense that's going to come. It's going to end up being just like surface water. It's going to start out a buck eighty-five and it's going to end up eleven eighty-five. We didn't get any answers. We didn't get any notice. These people are all here word of mouth.
We'll address how this public hearing, this is the first public hearing that we've had on that. There was previous information meetings, but not public hearings. This is the first public hearing, and the notification did comply with the legal requirements for public hearings. Correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's true. And just to clarify, we got an email from Mr. Strupp, who I had, I called him back, and we did exchange voicemails. We never talked in person, so I never got complete information about what they were looking for. It was never presented as any kind of data request. And so I had encouraged them to come tonight, which is great that everybody did come to share with the council what the concerns were. There isn't an affirmative duty for us, you know, the, the city can have the discretion to legislate their community, which would include these types of ordinances. So there doesn't have to be reports of problems. And I wasn't under the impression that we were getting a data request for a list of problems that had arisen. So if that was a data request, then, then that was not made clear to me, and I did exchange voicemails with Attorney Strupp about that.
Okay, thank you, Pam. I think moving forward as a public hearing, we'll, we'll try to let everybody speak, and then we'll probably try to address the questions after everybody has had a chance. So I'll open up for the next person who would like to provide testimony as part of this Anyone else wish to speak? Thank you, Kevin, and for the record, you can just state your name and write your name down also. So, thank you.
You probably know me. Kevin Strupp, attorney. I've been retained by approximately fifteen landlords who have concerns about this proposed, I'm going to call it a landlord ordinance, because that's what it really is. I did not make a data request, but historically, when someone asked for information from the city, we got a response. This time I got the response, you weren't going to respond, which is fine, but it leads to exactly what Mr. Taylor was saying. What are we trying to fix? And I'm hearing, well, there's really nothing we want to fix. We're just going to create an ordinance and another person and charge some fees, and I'm not quite sure why. And the landlords aren't quite sure why. I know the ordinance has been changed, because there's some stuff in it originally that was really beyond the pale in terms of what would be appropriate. But the current draft still has issues. I presume we're going to hire a new person. It's not clear from the ordinance, but that seems to be the implication, we're going to hire a person. I note that the ordinance is going to cover manufactured homes. I'm beginning to wonder if this is real Broadmore Valley issue. If so, you shouldn't pass an ordinance because of one problem. You should just take care of the one problem. We think you have a problem instead of making a broad scope ordinance. So we've got to register. We're going to have to have separate registrations for each dwelling, so I'm not quite sure how that multiplies. I note the ordinance requires we're going to have somebody that's going to respond within one hour. Apparently, we're going to have to have somebody on notice twenty-four hours a day. I simply inquire, if I call the city, am I going to get a response within one hour? So on the landlords, we have one hour requirement. On the city, nothing. Not quite appropriate. Again, I'm not quite sure what the problems have been. I'm not quite sure on why we're not being able to contact landlords. It seems to me everybody knows who the landlords are. I've never heard of an incident where they can't find the landlord and the landlord does not respond. So I'm not quite clear. Ordinance doesn't indicate what the fees are. I don't know what your fees are going to be, although they're telling me it's going to be fifty dollars per registration, but that course is not set in stone and can be changed, and this always morphs to greater fees. Consistent with the city doesn't have responsibility, we're supposed to register each year, city's supposed to give notice, but it states failure of the city to deliver a new application and/or failure to waive the new requirement, it's not the city's responsibility. So if the city falls up and doesn't give notice, then landlord's still liable. City has no responsibility. Failure, no, no consequences to the city. The whole ordinance talks about all the other ordinances that already exist, which leads to exactly the question of why do we have this ordinance? We're already got to comply with the city housing code. We already have to comply with parking ordinance. We already got to comply with all the existing ordinances. This ordinance simply refers to all the other ordinances that already exist, so pray tell, why do we need this ordinance? What I really find troublesome is we're going to have this automatic right to enter into private property without warrants, without court orders. It's just going to be mandatory, I get to come in if I'm the city employee. Moreover, that's not, that not only covers the landlords, that somehow is going to go to the tenants, and the tenants are waiving the requirement of a warrant. So apparently, we can barge into private property, because when I rent an apartment, it is private property. So the city thinks under this ordinance, we can go into the landlord's property and inspect, and we can go into private apartments rented by tenants and inspect without warrants. And we're going to put in our leases mandated by this ordinance that tenants are going to waive that. I'm not so sure how many tenants are going to waive that. And what happens then if the tenants don't waive that? The landlord's in violation of the ordinance, and we're off to the races defining the landlords according to your ordinance. There's a loop here that I don't think anybody at the city has thought through on the problems this creates in the impropriety of the city inspecting private property just because the city wants to. There's no strict requirement of why to inspect. The city can inspect if the city wants to. Well, I think that's problematic on many levels. Now, to the extent you have problematic tenants, and we go in under this concept and we hit drugs, what kind of a mess does the city have now? It's a government inspection without warrant? Seems to be a violation of constitutional rights? Seems to give rise to potential problems in prosecution? I think the city's creating a problem that the city is going to regret. We didn't combine things. We say if you haven't paid your real estate taxes, you don't get to register. If you don't pay your real estate taxes, you're going to take the property and you're going to sell it. Why double down on this and not let them to register? Let's say somebody gets behind on their taxes, and what's their income to bring the taxes current? Renting the property, and you won't let them rent the property. Seems to be a taking without compensation. You're going to get sued on that issue if that happens. It's not appropriate at all. Then I love this broad concept. If anybody or their employees, representatives, directly or indirectly, indirectly means it's kind of infinite, provides false or misleading information, I don't know what misleading means, I don't know what that leads to, then blah, 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 you are in trouble. Then we've got, if we've got repeat problems, the landlord is responsible for anything the tenants do under this ordinance.
Landlord, anything the tenants do under this ordinance?
I like the echo. It's a problem. You're shifting liability and responsibility according to this ordinance to the landlords for anything the tenants do. Now theoretically, this is just a city ordinance, a city issue, but if there's a problem and somebody sues somebody, some attorney like me is going to be waving this around and say, when the tenant killed the person in their apartment, it was disorderly, and under the ordinance, it's a landlord problem. You're creating potential liability without thought or concept as to the potential consequences. And of course, that definition in there regarding shifting the landlords of disorderly conduct is extraordinarily broad. Public safety, public peace and order, public morals. So I don't know, somebody's drinking and gets drunk, it sounds like they're being immoral to me perhaps, is that liability to the landlord? Apparently so under the definition of your ordinance. Extraordinarily broad, and it's all back to the question of, I don't know what problems you're trying to fix, because no one will respond to that question. But if we're not having problems to fix, you're creating new problems by this ordinance. All the costs of this are going to be shift, shifted to your tenants, by the way. Landlords are just going to pass this baby right on to your tenants. So if they got to have somebody on twenty-four hour call, boom, it's added to the lease. This is all going to shift. You're not improving your tenants' situation. It's like the St. Paul Rent Control Ordinance, which I imagine you're all aware of. Let's put in a St. Paul Rent Control Ordinance, and what happened? All construction stopped on a dime, landlords have said no, and now they have a big shortage of rental units in St. Paul, and they're trying to fix the ordinance they passed without thinking. And this is much the same. Now, I understand the concept is we have these type of ordinances in other towns, Minneapolis, St. Paul, I'm not so sure we should be copying them. This is Marshall. Tell me the problem, show me the problem, let's deal with the problem. If we don't have a problem, let's not multiply problems by adding an ordinance that accomplishes nothing but simply creates further problems. Now, I love the interim housing. So the city can decide not to let somebody register, then the tenants are thrown out, and then the landlord has to provide at landlord cost, housing for the tenants. Provided at owner's expense, suitable interim housing similar to the existing, owner should provide such until the registration is granted, which of course is that city discretion, or restored or until the end of the lease term, whichever is shorter. So we think we can take private property by refusing the registration, and not only do that, and we could do that because you didn't pay your real estate taxes, and we won't let you rent the property out to pay your real estate taxes because you can't get a registration if you're dealing with your real estate taxes. And then we're going to have your tenants go out, and then when you're already in financial trouble, you've got to somehow finance providing housing for tenants. Not appropriate, not even nearly appropriate. Then of course, we go right back to say nothing prevents the city from taking enforcement action under any of its fire, housing, zoning, health, safety. All the ordinances you already have, which cover all the issues you've got right here, this adds nothing but problems. Then of course, we're going to prosecute if anybody violates some misdemeanor. But here's what I love. Back to landlords are responsible, city not. No provision of this article designating the duties of any official or employee of the city shall be so construed as to make such official or employee liable for the penalty provided in the section due to failure to perform such duty. Your officers screw up, they have no responsibility. Landlords are, body slammed. This ordinance is not appropriate, not nearly appropriate, not thought through. City employees may think it's a good idea. The landlords are upset. And the landlords you're going to lose are the small landlords. The big landlords, they'll pass the cost and deal with this. Your landlord just two apartments, four apartments, they don't know what they're going to do with this. You're going to end up losing housing. This is not a good idea. You're inviting a lawsuit.
One procedural thing that, in order to really provide the opportunity for everybody to speak and be respectful, let's not have the clapping and applause. Who's next? Anyone else wish to speak?
The landlords of Marshall are clearly a very powerful and highly organized entity, as you can see here tonight. With forty-four percent of the population of Marshall renting from them, and it's also very lucrative, tenants don't have a means to hire legal representation to eloquently dive into every aspect of this ordinance for you. With the power that they wield, they also are able to influence the voices of their tenants. Many, many times that I've spoken to over the last couple of weeks have noted that they have, had a lot of issues with repairs, but they're not only unaware of recourse through the city, but they're also legitimately afraid of retaliation of coming up and speaking tonight. I have a letter here from one of those tenants. My name is Brayden. I live in Marshall, Minnesota, in a Section Eight development named Winsong Apartments. In my five years of living here, I have never seen management be as willfully ignorant in my, in property management as my current landlords have been. Black mold and water leaks are a constant with my first apartment. Maintenance originally told me there was mold occurring because I didn't use the bathroom fan when I showered. This is an illogical statement because the mold is coming from behind the wall. The solution they provided for the mold itself was to scrub it with soap and ammonia and paint over the area. Of course, the mold always came back stronger every time. Water leaks that I reported were always met with, well, it's not water, wet or leaking in the area right now, so call us if it happens again. To this day, the mold has not been fixed in that apartment. The ceiling was cut open, moldy insulation is just sitting on the towel cubby in the bathroom. Rather than fix, fix the issue, they moved me to an apartment with, which brought different problems with no solutions. My current apartment, along with the rest of the building, is currently infested with roaches. When I brought this up, the response from management was not every bug is a roach. When I received another email from the maintenance man correcting me that the bug infestation, infestation was a typical brown beetle common in the Midwest, they finally got an exterminator here. He came and sprayed a bit of chemicals in the kitchen and left. He was approximately here for three minutes. The second time a month later, he sprayed, sprayed three places and left with no information on when he was coming back or what his plan was to kill as many as possible. Recently, I had a cockroach crawl on me when I was getting ready for bed. This, they are in my room now, and I forgot to mention, this is a disabled person, that one of the reasons he wasn't able, able to come here is he had access to come. Management is doing the bare minimum, and I'm keeping a bag of dead roaches to prove they are in fact roaches. A common reaction I've received whenever I bring these issues to any government agency's opinion is that the landlord issue is, at least they're trying. I believe the onsite coordinator, Ashley, is, but no one else. Other tenants have also brought this up to management with no real change. I'm at my wit's end. I am powerless against management, and they know they have the power to do what they want with no one to answer, answer to. I need help.
Thank you, Misty. Next person to, to speak?
Hello, my name's Robert Arns. I'm just a small-time property manager in the town of Marshall. I'm just trying to wrap my head around that a little bit. Tenants do have a voice. It's the state of Minnesota. I mean, they can go ahead and contact anybody up in Minnesota and have their, have their problems heard, and they'll come down and do stuff. I mean, the courthouse, you can go to the courthouse and you can put money, your money, your rent money, that's supposed to be going to landlord into an escrow, and the landlord doesn't get money until they fix a problem. I mean, we have, we have things in place to protect the tenants and hold landlords or property managers accountable. That's why I'm just trying to, I'm trying to wrap my head around, like, why there is going to be more of that and more officials coming in and dealing with situations that tenants should have knowledge of. Property managers, landlords are supposed to be providing that. So, I mean, maybe this is a little bit more of a informational kind of deal that the tenants need to have information handed over to them that they're not getting, or it needs to be posted in these big apartment complexes in more visible area so that they know where they can go to complain? I mean, they don't need more people to complain to. I mean, they don't need more people to complain to, they just need to complain to the right person, and we already have that with the state of Minnesota and with the courts. So, they can go in there and do that. Same as landlords, they can go complain to, you know, the judicial system. So, I don't see a pen. I won't sign my name.
Thank you, Robert. Next person who wishes to speak?
My name is Sean Butler, and I am related to Misty. She's my wife. I'm also one of the people in the community that has helped out at Broadmoor to organize the tenants out there. It was a number of years ago, a meeting with Glenn Bayer Kohler, actually, who was on the city council, when he recommended that Marshall have a renters' ordinance, that there was nothing in Marshall to protect renters. And we had talked to the city attorney, and he kind of made it sound like he was working on something. And then the pandemic happened, and I think it maybe just got, we weren't bringing it up, so he quit talking about it. But now, someone with means complains about a VRBO parking situation, and all of a sudden there's this big concern that pops up. What we were wondering is, and a lot of people have asked this, and like my wife said, there's a lot of people who would be here tonight, but they're scared. They don't want to get kicked out of their house. You sent 120, 145 letters to landlords. What in the future is going to be done for the tenants? If 44% of the city rents, that's over 5,000 people. And it seems like your main concern is with 140, 150, 200, whatever it is, landlords. And I think those other 5,000 people need to know about this. Most people don't know that they have any recourse. When we started organizing at Broadmoor, no one knew that there was anything they could do. And nearly five years later, things haven't really improved out there. You know? I mean, has it, can anybody say that Broadmoor is better today than it was five years ago? It isn't. You know? And now the owner of Broadmoor has filed Chapter 11, so he can, you know, protect his assets and take care of everything for himself. And meanwhile, people are still living out there. And the thing that bothered me the most is when people would say, well, why don't they just move? Why don't they just move? If they don't like it there, why don't they just move? You know, if this is so overreaching and terrible for landlords in this town, why don't they just sell? You know? I understand they're a very powerful entity, and they're organized, and they can afford to hire attorneys and everything like that. We raised money forever and gave it to this guy who just wasted it. I mean, he didn't really do anything, but that was the best we could do at the time. I mean, you know, ask David Sturrock. He was on the city council, and then poof, he was gone. And why was he gone? I mean, the financial disclosure forms for the guy who took his seat pretty much says it all. So what we're asking is, like, are tenants going to be made aware of this? Is this just going to be killed? Because if it is, then, you know, there's really no point in continuing on talking about this. But where's the protections for the tenants? You know? And I guess the ask is, send it back to the committee and try and add something to it that protects the residents that are renting, you know? I'm sure there's a lot of landlords that are great. We've went up against one of the worst ones. You know? I guess if my ask of the landlords is, quit protecting the worst ones, because they might come for you next. So that's it, that's all I got. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is John Clapp, and I don't own a whole lot of rental property, but I own some. And I get the fact that there are bad landlords, but there's a lot of bad tenants, as I'm As an older guy, I moved away from the cities because I wanted to get away from high taxes and bureaucracy. So I came to a smaller city, live in a smaller town nearby, and decided I had to do something, so I bought some rental property. And that was probably one of the bigger mistakes I made in my life. Because landlords do go through a lot of hell. They do. I don't like to say it that way, but, you know, we get calls all hours of the night, and I would like to think of myself as an extraordinary landlord that goes the extra mile, tries to educate their tenants and stuff like that. And I realize that there's people that are going to take advantage of, you know, while there's people that take advantage of me, but of course, there's obviously landlords that take advantage of tenants. And, of course, we don't like that. But the big thing is, is you go to the cities, and we always hear that, and I have, in a smaller town, I got some rental property in a smaller town nearby, and I've drawn some people from the cities out here to enjoy the lower rates of rental rates and stuff like that. But we've got to be careful. I was just at one of the meetings that we went to, we talked about raising rents and stuff like that. And this town enjoys some of the lowest rents. This town and nearby towns, probably in the whole country. And they appreciate that. So I was inclined to ask some tenants of mind to come in here, to be represented here, tenants, and ask them, do they want $100 a month increase? Or $200 a month increase? Or someday, let me back up here, I was mentioning that there was some rental property in Duluth that was mentioned at one of the meetings, and that I think the person owned some rental property. I looked at rental property in Duluth, and it's like, you can't find a one-bedroom for under $1,000 bucks in Duluth anymore. Now, I guess Duluth hasn't fizzled up and gone away, or whatever, but do tenants want to pay? You know, we have a lot of low-income tenants here, that's why probably they are tenants. And it's like, okay, there are bug issues in this city, all over this city, and I'm dealing with it and struggling with it. I've had rental property for five years, and I haven't made an income from that five years. I've worked for five years and made, I've worked thousands of hours. That's my mistake, it's not your mistake. But we, and obviously, I got to raise rents. And then hopefully, other landlords will raise their rents too, you know, because I'm not a big dog. I'm just small apples, real small apples, barely hanging on type of thing. And so I have a big concern that stuff like this is going to, and I'm working on my properties, I'm fixing, maybe I'm the exception and not the rule, probably, but I just get real scared of bureaucracy, because like the attorney mentioned, I've seen what it's done to Minneapolis and St. Paul and Duluth and other cities, and I guess I just don't want that to happen to Marshall. So, we also got to know and consider that, are these tenants willing to have, you know, a pest-free, whatever, I mean, that has cost thousands and thousands of dollars. Are they willing to pay the extra money? The $100, $200? And I mean, we're addressing, I'm addressing those issues. I feel, I don't think I have any bugs in my units right now. But, but I also would like to start making some money at this, too. And it's just not a big money winner for me. And so I do have some concerns that, and hopefully you'll consider what I say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anyone else wish to speak as part of this public hearing? I'm sorry, would you say your first name again?
Brianna. So what I just kind of heard was, basically, it's cheap, so you should be happy with what you get. Right? Cool. So I rented an apartment in town, RC Square, through college and a little bit after. I like to get ahead of some of the questions that are always asked, like, why didn't you move? I would have if I could have. I didn't live there because it was fun, because I liked it. It was because there was nowhere else to go. Some of the problems I dealt with there, there was a variety, but there are three major ones that sticks out. One was the bugs. Yeah, we have a roach problem, and yeah, people want it fixed. I can tell you that from living air. For three years, people coming in spraying chemicals, going back in, they're back two weeks later, they're everywhere, you're throwing food away, that's money down the drain. I don't know if you've seen the cost of food lately, but having to throw away brand-new, just-bought food because it's now full of roaches isn't exactly a great feeling, especially when you're broke, which I was. And yeah, I worked my butt off, I worked 60 hours a week. I worked full-time and part-time, I was still broke because bills are crazy. And I had a four-year degree, so I can't imagine these people that are trying to work just in the service industry, trying to make ends meet with a family. The bugs were great, it was awesome, it was so fun. Would I pay for pest-free? I shouldn't have to, because it's not my property. If you want me to go out and find my own exterminator, gladly. I also had an issue where my bathtub leaked through my ceiling, causing part of my ceiling to fall into the downstairs area. That was never fixed. Three years, there was a hole in my ceiling. It was a popcorn ceiling. What are popcorn ceilings made out of? Asbestos. What happens when you disturb asbestos?
No. Continue.
It gets dangerous. The floor was never fixed where the water was leaking through, it was wet and squishy. So I'm sure there was lots of fun things under that floor. The ceiling was never fixed, the water leak was never fixed. The bathroom was full of black mold all the time. Their solution, when I would complain about it, was to throw some caulk over it and call it good. I was told that if I wanted it to stop, to shower with the door open. So I did, I lived alone, I don't care. It didn't stop. The biggest problem that I faced, all of this would have been livable, honestly, it would have been fine. The biggest problem I faced was the heat. My heat was not turned on until December 1st, it didn't matter how cold it got in November, and it was shut off March 31st, no matter how cold it still was. We live in Minnesota, November's cold. There were times when my apartment was 54 or 52 degrees. And if you think that sounds manageable, I invite you to go home and turn your thermostat down to that, because the average Minnesota home in winter is set at 68 to 70 degrees. Go ahead and turn it down a good 20 degrees. When I brought that to my landlord, she told me to turn on my oven and open it. That was her solution. I came to the city about that issue back in 2016, 2017. They told me they weren't going to do anything about it, because there was no ordinance that said that landlords had to turn the heat on. I asked, would you consider passing an ordinance? They said no. That's how I lived. It's been years, but it still hurts. And yeah, there are bad tenants, but I was a good tenant. I paid my rent on time, I was quiet, because I lived alone, I didn't cause any problems because I didn't want to get kicked out of my house. If something broke, I fixed it if I could. My back door was broken, the handle was broken off because of someone trying to break in, it was never fixed. That's my security, that's my safety. Move out. I looked, for four years, I looked. But I also worked in a field where I got a firsthand look at what other tenants were dealing with because of my job. Tenants who had sewage water up to their ankles but couldn't get ahold of their landlords because they just didn't return their calls and didn't know what to do. Tenants that had issues with management, maintenance people being, making them uncomfortable, that would insist on only coming when their husbands weren't home. But when they were home, just a string of so many things that I listened to and heard about. And my heart went out to those people because I understood what it was like. And so to sit here and hear, like, well, it's cheap, so you should be happy with it, or there's no issues, I went to my landlord so many times and was ignored. And so it's hard for me to sit here and listen to people complaining that they want, that there's an ordinance. Because, hey, if you're poor, who cares about you, right? I mean, that's the world we live in. We don't care. You're poor, or you're a minority. You don't work hard enough, you need to figure it out. Please tell me how I could have worked harder, because I would love, love, to hear your solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. I'm going to hold you off, because you've already spoken once, and then, so we'll let everybody have a chance, so.
Hello, my name is Marlene Cologne. I no longer reside in this town because I don't like living here. I lived in this town for about 13 years of my life, so I lived here for a long time. My child went to school here, he is going to be 15. Not a good thing, but that's another issue, huh? So I had a landlord, he's not here. I don't see him here, anyway. But my landlord, the last time I spoke with him, wanted me to pay him $5,531.78 for damages, apparently, that I had done to this POS of a home I lived in on 412 Cassouth. So I am poor. I worked my whole life, still doesn't seem to matter, but whatever. Nobody ever cared what happened to me, no one cared about anything, no one cared about the mold, no one cared about the fact that all of my plants died, no one cared about replacing my refrigerator, no one cared about replacing my oven, no one cared. No one insulated my home, I was cold all the time, and I have a child, this lady did it, I had one. When I lived with my ex-boyfriend, he moved out, so I lived in that residence for one year. My landlord didn't even contact him, he didn't even ask him for anything, he only asked me. And I only lived there by myself for one year. Now, I like how everyone says, why don't you save some money? I've never been able to save money, ever, my whole life. I worked in the service industry my whole life, I am 49 years old, still working in the service industry. So I never could save money, because I had to eat and live and pay bills. Sometimes my electricity bill was higher than my rent, and yeah, my rent was cheap, it sure was. Cheap living, cheap everything. There was nothing pleasant about that place at all. I had racist neighbors, I had people trying to drive me out of there. My landlord did nothing, called the cops, called the cops, called the cops. So, I'm glad I don't live in this town anymore, it never served me. There was never anything nice about living here, and no one was ever kind to me or my son. So, I hope you guys get an ordinance, because poor people, brown people, people deserve good stuff in this world. It's not all about everybody with power and money, it's about people like me, I worked my whole life, I pay taxes, I do all that wonderful stuff that everyone requires me to do as a citizen of America. So I hope you guys pass this ordinance, because people can really use it, you know, eat the rich. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish, wish to speak? Otherwise, Robert, you, you, okay, Darwin. Go ahead, Darwin. I will get back to you, so.
All right. Hello there, my name's Darwin Dice. Thanks for allowing input tonight. I think, uh, these kind of open forums and meetings are, uh, real important for, uh, bringing our community together. So unfortunately, the tenants don't have dramatic legal representation here, so I want to, uh, echo some of the concerns I've heard about tenant difficulties. But I will, I will try be positive where I can. Because this has been a good discussion, but it must continue and actually lead to a even better ordinance that seriously takes into consideration some of the concerns that you've heard about what happens when apartment living conditions are not maintained and there's no serious system of accountability for remediation when things are literally falling apart. Now, clearly, there are apartment owners and managers who are conscientious with fixing things, and we are grateful for those people. But there's also those who seem to be given the old, uh, wink and nod while doing very little fixing when it's needed. So again, we've heard of the need to fix substandard living conditions. We need to remember that people are paying rent for a place not just with a roof and walls, but a place where they can count on things like pipes that don't leak, toilets at work, walls without molds, homes without nasty bugs, heat that's dependable, et cetera, et cetera. These things that many of us simply take for granted. Whether we're apartment owners, apartment dwellers, or people who, um, own their own place, people simply need safe environments to simply live. We've heard a lot of reasons, people have come here to speak for accountability around decent and safe housing environments. One of the values that I hope all of us share tonight is that we're committed to building vibrant communities that are a place of belonging and opportunity for everyone, a place where young people can see a future, a place where families want to move, and a place where they can count on their apartment and home being maintained. So thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Darwin.
Yep.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Terry Irons. Um, we have rentals here in Marshall. Um, we're a small fish in the bowl, basically. Just a few things that I want you guys to be made aware of. Um, with our rentals, we usually are very, I believe, up to date with trying to fix windows, doors, for the safety of the people that rent our places. Try to keep our rentals up. Um, the one thing that we've ran into troubles with, with our renters, is that with roaches, they're not real honest sometimes. They can be running around for weeks before anybody is contacted for our manager, who takes care of our properties. And that becomes an issue, because if you've got more than one unit, they can go into another unit. And it just keeps going and going. And when you do get your person in there to take care of it, because of how they take care of the rodents, they don't use as strong a drugs anymore, it's multiple times that you are going in there to clean it. So it's not that you don't want to take care of it, it just takes time. So I want you to know that there are some very good landlords, some very good rental managers out there in your city. We're trying our best, but we're small, and I know you've got a lot, but please keep us in mind.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Jeremy Perry. I own a apartment complex in town. I don't like talking in front of people, obviously. Um, just being here, hearing things, um, I've owned my apartment complex for, I guess, in four years now. We have all these same issues, cockroaches, mold, water problems. I have to pay for the place. It wasn't free, it wasn't given to me. Um, we want to keep affordable rent, but it seems like that's the problem. And I don't know, to me, if the city wants to help, are there grants for these things? Is there things available for property owners that can't afford to replace all their windows, replace all their toilets, replace all their, their showers, you know? So if grants are made available, we'll fix these things. Cockroaches, obviously a problem everywhere. Is there anything the city wants to help with? You know? It's like, can we come up with funding? So, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yep.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken wish to speak? If not, Robert, did Terry speak for you, or? Okay, I think Tara will go before you, and then, I'm sorry, I made you, I made you get up twice, sorry about that.
Um, I'm Tara Unken, and I'm just gonna sign in here quick. So, um, I kind of fall on both sides of the spectrum, because I have, um, tenants. I own a property here in town with, um, three units, and others elsewhere. So I come from the landlord's side. I work with a lot of investors and a lot of, uh, property owners through, uh, real estate. But I also have worked in education, homeownership education, so I can kind of see it through both sides of the lens. And I know it's a really tough topic to talk about, but, you know, one of the things that I think is, uh, good reminder is that, being a landlord, it's, it's not all fun and games. I've been with some of my friends who own property, and we clean out the, the, I would show you pictures and you still would not believe it. And that's the, that's the ugly side of it, right? Now, in addition, we've all taken loans out, we all have debts, we all have responsibilities, and this is just another thing that goes against trying to keep things affordable. And I know it's tough, it's a hard line to walk, because there are landlords that don't uphold their responsibilities. But this is a blanket ordinance that kind of penalizes everybody. It penalizes the good landlords, and it penalizes the good tenants, because rents will go up, and when we want to keep them affordable, plus it's another hoop to jump through, when somebody is looking at, say, our community and another community, new construction, which, which, um, you know, town is more, more friendly for construction and investment? And one could argue that this could throw us out, depending on how this is, um, written and implemented. You know, another question I would ask is, is what protections are there for landlords? You know, I have my tenants sign a sheet, maybe, maybe other landlords do, too, that all of the, the fire alarms are installed and in working order, and carbon monoxide detectors are installed and in working order. I want safe and healthy places to live for people. But then, you know, if they remove a, a fire alarm because they light a candle, or they're doing some cooking, and then an inspector comes in and it's off, guess whose fault it is? The landlords. I just have, I have a fundamental problem with that, because it's hard. It's hard, and people are going to be pointing fingers at each other. And I just don't see how that can really bode well for anybody. We have codes right now, and, and they're not being enforced. We have, we have codes if we drove through different, um, neighborhoods and different communities. They're not being enforced. So how is this any different? We implement another thing that is really hard to enforce, and as Mr. Strupp said, you know, a lot of this is in place already to some extent. Is this really going to be the answer? Um, and instead of punishing, we as landlords that have taken risks and invested in our community, why don't we spend the same amount of effort and hours in educating the tenants on the resources that they have, and where they can go in order to, to make some of these complaints? And I know it's not easy. I've worked with them. I've worked with tenants who are in crappy situations and helped them define different housing. I know it's not easy from either side of, of the coin, but this is not the answer the way it is proposed.
She said pretty well there.
Okay.
But I would, I mean, on behalf of, like, a lot of the good landlords.
I need to have you at the microphone, just because we're-
Again, I'm Robert Irons. I'll put my name down here this time. Uh, I think on behalf of, um, a lot of the good landlords and good property managers, I think they, to the tenants that are here representing themselves, I think they would like to apologize, you know, for any kind of bad, bad behavior from other landlords, and stuff that brings forward all these other ordinances and things that they feel that they have no protection. Again, I, I'll reiterate, you know, there is protections in place for tenants, and maybe this just has to be a little bit more informational for the tenants, and the landlords and the property managers have to be doing a little bit better job as far as getting them the correct people to contact. So, instead of just another number, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you again, Robert. Uh, anyone else wish to speak? If not, I'm gonna turn to the council for any input, any comments as part of the public hearing. And then the council will have the, um, decisions to make whether or not to close the public hearing, or whether or not to continue this public hearing, so that there is time to address a lot of the things that were brought up by all of the people here this evening. And if that is the, the choice of the council to continue this hearing, I believe our attorney would probably recommend a process for that, that it be a specific date and time that would allow enough time, not only for the, um, follow-up on the things that were brought up as part of the public hearing, but also then, an appropriate amount of time to continue the public hearing, so that that follow-up can be discussed in a, at a continued hearing. That was a long way of saying what could have been said, in a lot shorter. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, I want to thank everybody that, uh, came here tonight to, to express your concerns, your ideas, um, to talk about your situations, and to inform the council, to give us a better vision of your situation, your point of view, and, uh, you know, I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, I think I, I really support just to continue this, um, hearing and, and to, to do more work on this. I, I think that, uh, obviously there's a number of questions that need to be answered, and some things that need to be sorted through, so I just want to thank everybody for their time. And I know that it's not easy, you know, no matter which side of this you're on, if there, if we want to call it sides, but to stand in front of a group like this and to give it out, so I, I really want to thank you all for, for doing that. And hopefully out of that, we, we get, our actions will be better fitting for what we need to, to have happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Anyone else from the council wish for input or to speak?
I just, first of all, I want to clarify that I don't longer own any rentals in Marshall that are not licensed by the state. Um, just so, because I know people think I own rentals. I sold them all, I have just state-licensed facilities. With that being said, I've been on both sides of this. Um, I also own rentals in town, somebody said Duluth. I used to own one in Duluth. I did sell it because their rental ordinance is extremely rigid, and I just didn't want to deal with it. But with that being said, I, I think we need to, Craig, is I'd like to hear more from the tenant's side of it. I'd like to have the tenants have a safe place where they don't feel like landlords, and I don't think any landlords are gonna, I don't believe our landlords would do that. I have confidence our landlords would hold it against them. But I'd like to give the opportunity, and I know Jason, I've been telling you this for two weeks, to give our tenants a place to speak, a site where they can feel comfortable in telling us their side of it. We have listened to landlords, and I respect that, and I agree with a lot of stuff landlords say. But we haven't heard from our tenants. If the tenants are afraid to speak, we need to give them an environment to speak where they feel like they can. So continuation, maybe do a work session with them, or something in that sense, I would agree with that 100%.
Thank you, Jim. Any other input from the council?
You need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I would entertain a motion.
Move that motion? I'll second it.
Motion is what?
Continuance.
And?
Recommend that you continue it to a date-time certain, that gives enough time for staff to be able to, to provide or gather that input that is, is requested, and also for posting any, um, changes to the-
So, before I recognize the motion, Jason and/or Attorney Whitmore, do you have a recommendation on the continuance time for date certain? Or share?
To staff, because you're gonna be doing the, the legwork on that.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Can you hear me fine through here? This is, mic's a little touchy, but, um, you know, if we're gonna, if the idea is that we're gonna try to gather input from tenants, I think that that could take a little bit of time. We may need to do some sort of posting, uh, and invitation into a couple of different meetings, um, and then hear that, and then meet again. I don't know if, if that is the desired, is there a different way we should go as opposed to continuing the public hearing? If we need, uh, maybe up to a couple months to do that, or a month at least to do that? What is your opinion?
As long as you do a date-time certain, you can, or you, the council can just, um, give staff direction to work on this and start fresh, so.
If we were to state a time and not to have it dragged too far, I would say probably, um, the first meeting in March possibly, but, um, leave it up to council for direction.
So with that clarification, is that incorporated into the motion?
Is that enough time?
It's very tight. I was trying to, if we're gonna continue it, it just seems like we shouldn't continue it for many months, right?
I would say maybe the second, second meeting in March, that gives us two months.
I was thinking September. It's, it's a while. I mean, it's, it's gonna take a while, so.
Well, if we, if we get to the second meeting in March and we're not finished yet, we can, can we continue the continuation?
It, it might be best just to start from fresh.
Start from fresh?
Um, it seems like that would be the least amount of confusion, and then we can make sure that all the notice provisions are provided with, uh, if it is whatever the end product is.
So that would mean-
I'm about doing it right.
Close the public hearing, then, and just come back with another one, one's already-
You want to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion, then.
I'll withdraw my second.
They noted now is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig, to close the public hearing. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. So we'll now move to our second public hearing of the evening. This is a public hearing on West Lyon Street, North Third Street reconstruction. We'll follow the same procedure on this public hearing. I'll call on Jason Anderson to conduct this public, public hearing.
Do we have to do anything? Do we have to take action to not?
Take action on the agenda item. You closed the hearing, but then you should take action on the agenda item. And that would be, may involve direction to staff to, um, relook and come back to the council with, um-
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. I, my assumption was we were just not going to take action on the, on the ordinance, but if-
I would, I would make a motion that we abort the adoption ordinance adding Chapter 18, and, and send it back to staff for reworking.
I'll also second that motion.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now move to, um, the next public hearing, and this is the West Lyon Street, or Third Street Reconstruction Project. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll use this microphone, that other one is, uh, not working very well. Um, this construction project is another kind of long-running item for the city staff. Uh, we started process on this project, um, over a year ago. Uh, this is a complete reconstruction of- This is a complete reconstruction of three blocks of Lion Street and two blocks of North Third Street downtown. All utilities would be replaced, sewer, water, storm sewer, street curb, sidewalk. It's a complete reconstruction of the whole project area. We were approached early in the process about opportunity to kind of take some liberties with streetscaping on the project and also review the traffic control at the intersection of Main and Third. So we went through a process of many meetings with the Downtown Business Group and the council at committee level and, and here to kind of work through what this could look like. I've included in the packet some plan sheets that are not completed, but some draft plan sheets for streetscaping and landscaping on the project just for reference and to make them public and available for viewing. I won't go into complete details over all the elements in the corridor unless the council wishes to, but this is the improvement hearing, and we would like to continue moving forward with the process and order the preparation of plans. And in the coming weeks, we would continue to work with Bolton Mank, our design engineer, our PIT Committee of the City Council, and the Downtown Business Association to finalize the, the plans for the project. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Open up for input from the audience as part of this public hearing before we get to council input and comments. Anyone here that wishes to speak as part of this public hearing? Any input from the council?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The PINT Committee.
Welcome.
Al Greg, past tense, Greg Gregerson Management. The question is, with that scope of project, and I'm here for the Presbyterian Church rather than a specific piece of property, but that is an immense process. You've got a parking lot, you're going to do behind Fuzzy's, and it needs to be done, and, and all of Lion Street and all of Third for two blocks. Now, how, the implementation is so critical as to how that's done. And if you do, if they're digging in all those streets all at the same time, getting to the post office, getting to the movie theater, Mariprise, they could be surrounded and not virtually, no older person be able to get into there, except coming across from Varsity Pub down the alley would be the only way to get into that parking lot if the parking lot wasn't full of cement being dried. So how, how, I'm not against any of the projects, but it's really important to have a handle on how you handle it in order to be able to not have a real mess, being able to accommodate the people on Third Street and that need to have that extra support to survive that length of time.
Good question, Al. What, Jason, why?
Our answer man right here for you.
The logistics there of that?
Sure.
Thank you. A valid concern and definitely a huge concern for city staff on the project. We're still working through the final details and how, how we will accommodate access in the project, but some things that we're very likely going to move forward to is breaking the project into separate phases. We haven't exactly established how that'll look yet, but probably breaking the project into three to five different zones where you can't have those zones all opened up at the same time for underground work. Similarly, when you're doing underground work in the street corridor, we would expect that the contractor keeps the sidewalks open and available for use so you can at least circulate the project. We're talking about including maybe one location on a project block when it's under construction that has a, some sort of crossing across the construction area, maybe a wooden constructed crossing that can allow for getting from one side to the other. We're, we're not sure if we'll need that yet, but we're tossing that around. Once the contractor gets done with one phased area, we would expect that they fold the street back together, give some sort of temporary gravel surface so people can get closer to the businesses. These are just some of the things we're talking about. We are open to input from any business or property owner in this project area. We're doing our best to reach out to, to people. We've worked a lot with the Downtown Business Group. We acknowledge that there are people that we've missed through only working with that group. I worked with Brad Gruh out of the chamber to get a list of contacts downtown that maybe haven't been showing up to those meetings. I did reach out to them fairly recently to try to solicit some more feedback. This is an imperfect process. It is a big project. It's something that's been on our capital improvement plan for greater than 10 years. It's just time to get it done. Necessary utility replacement is the major driver of the project as well as street condition. And then while we're here, we don't want to miss an opportunity on the one block of Third Street when you've got a property owner that wants to maybe take it a little further. So it's an exciting opportunity. It will be a hassle for property owners. We acknowledge that, and we hope that they acknowledge that as well, but we really want to work with them to help ensure that they can be successful during the project.
Okay. And thank you, Jason. Anyone else wish to speak? Brad, do you want to speak at all or? Okay. Questions from the council or input?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. The public, the PINT Committee met again this morning with staff and, and spent a good hour reviewing the project, and we're in full support of recommendation to the council to, to move forward as recommended in the, for, for considering the resolution and order of the improvement and preparation of plans. So good project. There's been some really good compromises. I think a lot of really good input from the Downtown Business Association. This thing has taken a lot of turns, and there's been a lot of good ideas coming out. I think some pretty critical questions and concerns answered, and I think it's going to do good, like, like we talked about earlier and all the way through the project. This is a 50-year foundation that we're laying for that area. You know, these are changes that are, that are going to be long-term, and so I'm glad we took the time that we took, and, and I think we're going to put a very unique mark there with the input from, from the local business and property owners and the community at large. You know, we had some testimony here by representative from the Fine Arts Group at an earlier council meeting, I believe in, in November, that was also very supportive and excited about kind of making this, this street area and the area unique, and, and I'm really proud of the work that's happened with all the players. And again, on this one too, I want to thank staff. Staff put in a tremendous amount of time in listening to everybody and then to bring the group together and to continue to have the idea meetings. I want to thank Brad and the chamber for what they did too, to help support this. Sitting on the PINT Committee with all of that interaction, this would be a hard project to, to really get our head around because there were so many different kind of pressures or desires, and I think we've got a really, really good project proposal here, so I, I'm excited about it, and I just, I want to really recommend that we move forward.
Any other input from the council?
You know, other input I'd add is, again, from, I'm on the committee with Craig, is wholeheartedly Jason's been working on this since last January, but this project's been going back and forth 15 years.
Yep.
I mean, I, first, you said it's been going on longer than you've been here, and I think you go all the way back. This was proposed something, I remember Lenny Pippen proposing something, not that that's good or bad, but on Third Street, and that's been at least 15, 20 years since he's been.
So.
So.
I, I did hear from one of the business owners there, and it, it all comes down to aesthetics and access. I think it's a great idea. I think we want to make an impact on our community and make it more beautiful and make it more functional, but we also have to be cognizant of the access to the businesses that this is designed to support, and that was the one concern that this business owner who's on the corner has. And so we need to make sure that we think about that, and Al's, you know, question and logistical statement has to absolutely quintessentially be followed. You can't do it, I mean, you can't make it, you can't get there from here. That will kill people, and we don't want to do that. That will just give us a black mark that we will never, or the 50 years, ever make up.
Any other input from the council?
Just to echo or ask kind of the same thing. I mean, passing this resolution isn't setting this plan in place permanently. There's still room for change and growth and input, and we're going. I mean, I know we don't want to go.
Correct. You know, taking this step doesn't commit us to anything per se, but we are getting far enough along in the design process and committing a lot of resources to get the plans where they need to be to advertise for bid very soon. So we do want to see that, and that's why we are trying to meet so frequently too, you know, and with the DBA and with PIT, because we want to make sure that we, we all know what we're doing and what staff is working on with Bolton and Mank on this project. Redesigns cost lots of time and money, so that's, there is time. We do plan to meet with the PIT Committee yet again as well, if we can get it scheduled before the next council meeting to go over plans once we get them kind of edited again. So we're getting closer though. So the next meeting will be an opportunity for the council to approve plans and specifications.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Any other input from the council? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. So now consider the resolution that would order the improvement and preparation of the plans.
Make that motion.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. And they include consider the approval of the memorandum of agreement amending the AFSMI Article 13.2, the preliminary plat of Quick Trip 1255, the introduction of the plat and calling for the public hearing, consider authorization to advertise for bids for the MMU 001 Trunk Highway 23 Water Main Crossing Project, the Legion Field Stormwater Improvements Project, the project on Channel Parkway pavement replacement project, and chip ceiling of various city streets, consider authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department, and consider the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Move then to Agenda I of Number Nine, a request for interim use of permit for storage containers in a B3 general business district. Ilya?
This is a request to install a shipping container at Base Light Road by owner. The ordinance allows installation of one container with certain conditions. One of the conditions is to have a fence around that thing. Might have an aerial photo. So the container will be installed, as you can see, right behind the building, the red line, and the fence will be to the left of that thing, which will make it compliant with the ordinance, which requires that it's not visible from the public right of way. So obviously, on the, from the front, it will be covered with the fence in the building, and from the back, there is fence in the other buildings. So the recommendation is to grant this interim use permit.
Okay. Thank you, Ilya. And this was considered by the planning commission?
It was considered by the planning commission. Not a lot of concern or question, just making sure that the property owner, the representative, understood the conditions and that he will have to put a fence up too.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Thank you, Ilya. Agenda I of Number 10, consider adoption of the ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned land. Sharon?
Yes, this was previously introduced at the, at the last council meeting, and part of that discussion was the city was approached about selling this parcel of land in the packet, was a aerial photo of where this land is located. Due to the size and location of the property, the city, to my knowledge, has not had other offers on the land, but most recently, we did have someone who's interested in buying it. We believe that the sale of this land will lead to additional development with the adjacent property owner. Our understanding is that Center Point is working with that property owner, owner to the north, and it will hopefully lead to further development. So the buyer is willing to purchase for $55,000, which originally was a lot higher than some original thought on potential uses and what the, what we could sell it for. However, there are some land in the surrounding area that maybe comes closer to that market, so we are recommending to council that we sell this land to Center Point to help further development in that particular area.
Just to clarify, I know the council has the map, but it's directly across the street from Aldi. So just so everybody knows where it's at. If not, is there a motion to authorize the sale?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by, uh, motion by Jim?
Second.
Seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda I of Number 11 is the Aquatic Center Local Sales Tax Resolution. Earlier this evening, the council did meet in a work session to discuss the Aquatic Center construction proposal, and key to that would be the financing of that using an extension of the local option sales tax. That local option sales tax extension would require legislative authorization to, for the permission to go to a vote of the public for a referendum vote on whether or not the public would support extending that sales tax. So this resolution is required for consideration by the state, and there is a deadline of the end of this month. Sharon, I was, I'll turn to you.
Yep. You covered it pretty well, Mr. Mayor, in the memo that was included in the packet. There is a listing of six steps in order for us to fully go forward on a sales tax authorization, with the first step, as you mentioned, being adopting this resolution. Just some key points. In 2021, we did do a community survey on parks and recreation, and during that survey, we asked for different methods to pay for different amenities in, in parks and recreation. Greater than 70% from that survey stated that they would support a sales tax currently, like we have for Red Baron and Merritt. So we feel that we have a really good community support. I will add that for a project such as the size of the Aquatic Center, if we were not going to utilize sales tax, the amount of general property tax levy would be between 17 and 20% in terms of impact on the levy in one given year. So the sales tax, which annually generates approximately 1.7 million annually, provides a real stable and fiscally sound method in paying for this type of facility. Another key point is that we are not increasing the sales tax rate. It would be extending the current rate at a half percent, and I think that's another key point that we have discussed with business owners, and I know last year we did a lot of work on this, had support from the Chamber of Commerce and moving forward on this as well. And, you know, one of the things that we hear quite a bit is just attracting residents and community members, and, and of course, that can lead to assist our schools and provide staffing for our employers. So a, a good business support out there as well. So the first step would be to adopt this resolution. We really are picking up from where we were in 2022, where we followed the same process. The legislature was not able to complete their work. the same process. The legislature was not able to complete their work. So per the state statute, we need to start over again. And the recommendation would be to adopt this resolution. We will then submit this resolution to the appropriate tax chairs and their legislative aides. And we have secured the firm of Flaherty and Hood and our local lobbyists who have taken on the work of helping us, Marty Seifert, to get support from Senator Dames and Senator, Representative Swodenski. We do have some draft language from the senator's side, and we'll be discussing tomorrow. I know Councilmember Lozinski and Councilmember Schaefer will be going to St. Paul to help advocate for the Aquatic Center. We, late last year and all of last year really too, kind of talked about the need for the Aquatic Center. I did provide that handout earlier in the work session, but obviously, we've kind of stated that, that many times, that lots of deficiency. We had a study in 2018 that was completed in 2019. So I don't want to cover all those topics again. But again, this is the first step of, of six, and we need this resolution to, to begin our work. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor, and I can answer any questions.
Okay. Well, for questions? If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Amanda for the resolution related to the local sales tax extension. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, so this resolution is, I think it's very important, but we need to take great consideration. This is a beautiful facility that we're doing. The public has spoken and wants something like that. I think it will draw and serve as a, another diamond in the rough in our community and help draw more people to our community. But it's going to be expensive, and I want people to understand that. And so we need to do the steps to get it through the legislature and get that and go from there. But it's, it's, it's one of those touchy things. We want to buy something, we want to build it. We build it for our members of our community now. If we build it for our community members and visitors and guests come and they say, wow, that's really good, then you get more people moving into Marshall. But it, it may be tough. But right now, the pool we have is non-sustainable and certainly dying. I mean, we're losing 12,000 to 15,000 gallons of heated treated water a day into the Redwood River, which the EPA can't like. And it certainly is not viable going into the future. So we need to do something. And I think that this is the best thing right now. I just worry about the cost going forward. But it's never going to get any cheaper, that's for sure.
Thank you, Steve. Any other discussion on the motion?
You know, Stephen, and I agree with you, and with the current pool, we have, we're on borrowed time.
Oh, yeah.
Was it you, Bob, who said the original structure pool was 1931?
37.
37. And then I think it was remodeled in 72, 70, whatever. So I mean, we're looking at a pool that's, the original structure is 90 years old. So to say we're throwing something away instead of remodeling it is not correct on our pool. It's, it's 90 years old. Part of it is.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number 12 is Commission Board Liaison Reports.
Were you going to do them yet or not, Mr. Marshall? And, oh, I thought there was going to be an introduction.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, they're just, they're just in the back row.
I thought we were going to get an introduction.
They said they wanted one, and then right before the meeting, they changed their mind. I don't know what happened.
Well, those people are gone now, so.
You're so shy.
So we'll still continue with the Commission Board Liaison Reports. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Merritt Center was scheduled to meet last Thursday, but due to weather, we have been postponed, so I have nothing.
Adult Community Center met the day after we were nominated, so I had no time to get off of work, so I missed that one. And the EDA went over noon and I couldn't get out of work on that day. So I missed it. But the EDA, we talked about development at the Shopko Building, so.
Amanda?
Yeah, the EDA, first meeting that we had this year was really good. Just coming up with direction and a common, finding commonalities and a way to go for the future. We're actually not done yet, going to continue. So you're not, you didn't miss out.
Good.
Waiting on our homework, Sharon. And Planning Commission, not a lot to talk about. We did talk about that one tonight, but.
Okay. Regional Development Commission did meet this past Thursday. Actually, C was in attendance, is a member of the full commission also. It was a, the monthly meeting, it was probably abbreviated a bit because I think people were concerned about the weather. It was held in Slaton and so, but they conducted the business they needed to conduct. John?
MMU met last week. I was out of town, so I wasn't able to attend. We do have a meeting on Friday.
C?
All right. CVB met, and one of the big things they did was update their bylaw to allow any stakeholders who live outside of Marshall. So if they, for instance, they own Super 8 or something, but they live out of Marshall, they can't be on the commission or the bureau, on the commission. So they changed it. So now they can be part of that and then still represent because if they're a big stakeholder in the town. So that was the big thing.
Jim?
I minded that meeting.
We'll move then to council member individual items, Jim.
Since we're leaving at 5:30 tomorrow morning, I'm going to leave my brief and say nothing.
C?
Nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Craig?
Nada.
Steve?
I did get a call from a concerned constituent about the fee increases out of the airport. He was concerned about that. Unfortunately, we've already done it, so it's a little bit late. But we need to think about that. And exactly what I brought up when we raised things 250%, it's a shock to them and it impacts them. And probably we should need to look at a slow, steady raise if we need to do it as opposed to bam. And that's all.
And Amanda?
I've got nothing.
I'll have just one quick thing. The, you'll recall that we had a challenge, or we challenged the results of the 2020 census because, of course, it occurred shortly after the beginning of the pandemic. SMSU was closed, the housing units were closed down. So our choice at that time was, was to fund a recount, which would mean we would bear the cost of the enumerators, or do a more limited challenge where we would look, challenge the group quarters reports. And the group quarters report is the roster reporting of the housing units in Ward One that are on the SMSU campus. And they reported those, those folks on April 1 as a roster rather than by enumerators on the individual census forms. So yesterday we, and Steve and you, feel free to chime in here. The, we were informed that our challenge was accepted and approved. That's the good news. The not-so-good news is that they are unwilling and unable to provide us the new number because of the interpretation of data privacy. So while we know that our, our appeal was successful, we still don't know what our new number is, so.
So they know our population, but they can't tell us?
Exactly. So.
We secret.
Could they just tell us?
Got to love the bureaucracy grinder.
Did they whisper it to us?
Can we get a leak?
So we reached out to Congressman Fishbox's staff and Senator, I will tomorrow, and Senator Klobuchar's staff, because it's probably going to take their intervention. The, there was not willingness to really
Nice.
accept any other argument, like, all we need to know is the number.
The number. No privacy, no data there at all, except the number.
Well, and also, it's not private data because it was reported as a roster, you know, so rather than individual census forms, so.
We're from the government. We're here to help.
No, we're not. We're working from home.
That's, that's the update, only update I have. We'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Recently, the mayor and our EDA director and myself met with the running CEO, who's fairly new after the retirement of Dan Herman. And also, we met with North Star out of Cottonwood, that CEO as well. So two large employers, similar themes in terms of attracting, retaining staff. I know that was something that was brought up at EDA meeting that Amanda mentioned as well. But also just, you know, talking about the community and support for amenities. I know, for example, the North Star CEO, Pete Helly, is in support of this Aquatic Center. Just want to say that as well, because even though they're in Cottonwood, a lot of the employees come from Marshall. And, you know, when they're trying to attract employees, they are showing them different things and, and different amenities in the, in the city of Marshall. So final thing, I'll just keep this real brief. Preston's been working with Cam and Open Skate. They communicated with the individual who expressed concerns. Last Friday, there was no school. And I know that Preston and Cam opened up the Red Baron Arena for Open Skate. And I don't know if you wanted to comment briefly on that, but how many good turnout I think we had, right?
Yeah, for the two hours, I think we had like just under 45 kids. For that, overall, for the weekend through Saturday, Sunday, it was 247.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So a couple of parents think that's for doing it and just to get kids out of the house. So wasn't as high of a number as you were hoping, but at least it wasn't nothing.
Yeah. So that's all I had.
Thanks for doing that.
Yes.
Any question for Sharon? Jason?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Pam?
Nothing to report.
We'll move then to the remaining items on the agenda, which include the information items, cash and investment, the planning commission minutes, the building permits, as well as the upcoming minutes. Is there anything else to come forward this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by John.
Second.
Seconded by Jim to adjourn. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
I have to do voice. I, my computer shut down and I lost my voting till here, so.
Close the voting, and you can say aye or nay if you want, so.
Aye.
We are, the motion passes, we are adjourned.